I'd like to do something that is a paralegal to our pledge of allegiance to the flag. It's called a toast to the flag. Some of you may have heard it, but some may not.
Review.
Here's to the red of it. There's not a thread of it. No, not a shred of it. All the spread of it from put to head. He rose lead for it. They steal and lead for it. Precious blood shed for it. Making it red. Here's to the white of it. Thrilled by the sight of it. Who knows the right of it? But feels the night of it through day and night. Womanhood scared for it. Made manhood dare for it. Purity's prayer for it. Keeps it so white. Here's to the blue of it. Beauties view of it. Heavenly dew of it. Star spangled hue of it. Constant and true. Diadems gleam for it. States stand supreme for it. Liberties beam for it. Bright as the blue. Here's to the whole of it. Star stripes and pole of it. Lighty and soul of it. And oh for the roll of it. Sunshine in fruit. Hearts in accord for it. Swear by the sword for it. Thanking the Lord for it. Red, white. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I got it. Great. That is great. Dear heavenly Father, we give thanks for the wonderful day that you have presented us. We give thanks for this wonderful opportunity to gather in our county and do our business, take care of business. We give thanks for the men and women that have and do protect our shores. We ask that you guide them and lead them home safely. We ask that you keep and protect our nation. We're so thankful that we do not have bombs and mortars and things attacking our shores. Please be with the men and women across the world and especially the Ukrainian nation as they attend to a war. We ask that you be with us now and guide our leadership and do the things, all things great and all things well. By thy name we ask. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir. So at this time, we'll recognize any elected officials here with us tonight. So at this time, we'll recognize any veterans with us tonight. Please stand.
Scott, Jim, introduce yourself.
Live in Kings Mountain and grew up here in Cleveland County and a proud veteran of the Vietnam.
Scott Franklin, Kings Mountain, North Carolina. Haven't been to work, but lived here all my life, retired, Army veteran. Glad to meet you.
Brother, I recognize you now. We're the same watch.
Yes, sir.
So that's all I have to say.
Brandon Rube, North Carolina Army National Guard, Operation in New York.
Matthew Maples, resident of Kings Mountain, North Carolina, United States Air Force veteran.
Kenneth Flatter, member of Veterans Council, commander of the DAB Disabled American Veterans. Twenty-two years in Army, Vietnam veteran.
Brendan Ferguson, United States Marine Corps, Operation Iraqi Freedom veteran.
Donnie Hutchins, U.S. Army. Look, we've got a little pen, county pen, that we've got a veteran's rocker. None of the ones that don't have one, would you please come down? Let me give them one.
What it is, a county pin with a veteran's rocker on top of it. Appreciate you serving our country.
We get them one. At this time, we'll recognize members of law enforcement present.
Bill Todd, chief of the sheriff's office.
And how could you? Sheriff's office.
Just commit, police, county sheriff's office.
And at this time, we'll recognize county department heads.
Carrie Mountain, Assistant County Manager.
Perry Davis, Emergency Management Fire March.
Stephanie Hanson, Health Department.
Tom McNally, Emergency Medical Services.
Allison Lee, Medical Resources.
Sherry Ladd, your tax office. Senator Orville, Range Director.
Scott, open the mic. All right, the next item before us is a motion to adopt a proposed agenda.
Mr. Chair, if I may, ask to add one item to the agenda. Number 11, we've got board appointments. I would like to add an A and discuss my appointment to the community college and move the other board appointments to B. So we have an A and B.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion to amend the agenda and in a second, which will be adding the community college board appointment of Commissioner Hutchins as A and then the Board of Equalization and Review will be B.
Okay.
It's been seconded. So with that, is there any discussion? If not, all of us in favor will say aye. Those opposed will say no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is special recognition. Katie?
Sherry Biss.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Sherry.
Well, I am here tonight to recognize one of our boys at DSS, Samantha Franklin, for twenty-three years of service with DSS. And I only had the privilege of working with Samantha for about a year because I'm a new hire at DSS. But her leadership in the clerical department has been greatly appreciated over all of these years of service. She built a strong team within the clerical department. And they serve, what you need to know about the clerical department at DSS is everything turned. They are so vitally important to every service that we provide, to every citizen of Cleveland County. And so, Samantha.
Do you mind if I get a picture with the board?
Do you want us to come down front? All right. We just stay on here.
Yeah. All right, you ready? Great, thank you. Anthony, you want to say a few words?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Scott, congratulations. I enjoy working for Cleveland County, serving people that I have all the years ahead. Yes, I do. And I want to thank, I got some of my pups that are here. I miss it. So in some ways, I wish I hadn't, but I did what I needed. Anyway, I want to thank you.
They can come up if you'd like a picture with them.
You want to get a picture with them too? Sure.
You see me every day. Aw, come on, Scott.
Okay, you ready? Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Next item on the agenda is citizen recognition. Madam Clerk?
The citizen recognition portion of the meeting is an opportunity for persons wishing to appear before the commission. Each presentation will be limited to three minutes. No public comment period shall extend beyond thirty minutes. In the event a group of persons supporting or opposing the same position desiring to be heard, the board chair may require the group to designate a spokesperson for the group. Speakers shall be courteous in their language and presentation and are prohibited from verbal personal attacks on commissioners or Cleveland County employees. The board is interested in hearing citizen concerns, yet speakers should not expect comment, action, or deliberation on subject matter brought up during this segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate county agency.
First one on the list is Brandon Rube.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm here to discuss, promote, and encourage attendance for the first Cleveland County Prison to Community Simulation. This simulation is being conducted in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, North Carolina Department of Public Safety, Cleveland Community College, and is sponsored by STI Textiles in Kings Mountain. So what is a prison to community simulation? This is an event, it's not a meeting, this is an event in which you come and you are given a new identity. You are a recently released inmate from prison. You will be given a series of tasks to complete successfully, similar to what a inmate would experience upon release. And these tasks are as simple as just eating food. The goal of this event is to successfully complete the tasks without returning to prison. And it's not as easy as it sounds. I participated in one of these events and went to jail three more times. So Cleveland Community College, in addition to supporting this event and hosting this event, currently conducts trades training for sixty-four inmates that are bused down from Lincoln Correctional Facility at the old Cleveland County Correctional Facility. These inmates are going through training for carpentry, electrical, plumbing, and welding, and are given the skills they need to become successful members of society when they leave and become working-class citizens. If you are unable to attend the full simulation, I would greatly encourage you to, if you look at the agenda, I believe it was provided, if you're unable to attend the full simulation and we encourage you to do so, lunch will be provided. If you are unable to register with the Chamber of Commerce and attend, we encourage you to at least come for the special announcement in which Dr. Hurst and, I was recently informed, Speaker of the House Tim Moore will be making a special announcement regarding the future of this facility that we have here in Cleveland County. I would also like to recognize STI, the private sponsor who will be sponsoring this event, and allow them to discuss how reentry has impacted their organization.
Mr. Maples?
Thank y'all for having me. Since we started the program in 2019, STI has employed a total of forty-five offenders from Gaston Correctional Facility. And we currently have twelve incarcerated offenders on our payroll, each with excellent attendance. Their transportation costs, child support, fines, fees, restitution, et cetera, are deducted by GCC from their weekly earnings. We have nine post-release offenders who are extremely valuable to our day-to-day operations and in skilled positions. Offenders employed at STI currently on their release date had the option of retaining employment with us. Many released have returned to their homes and found employment in those areas. Some, however, prefer not to return to their home as they are remembered for their past offenses and not what they're doing today. They'd prefer to stay close to STI where they have employment, support, and a real opportunity to start over. STI is working with NCDPS to find necessary resources to make this happen. And once approved by NCDPS and probation parole, these resources are available to all offenders in the system, not just STI offenders. STI chooses to be proactive rather than reactive. And on a personal note, it's been a very beneficial program for us, not only for staffing reasons, but we've seen hope provided, grace given, and some valuable employees come out of this. So I appreciate the time.
Thank you, sir. Next on the list is Gary Lee.
Is there James Lay here either? Mr. Chair, you can skip.
All right, next on the list is David Trammell.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm here on behalf of Director of Shelby Rescue Squad. Going back and looking, a week ago today is when I received the call saying we were going to shut the rescue squads down. You know, when you hear that word, you know, you kind of get upset. You got a lot of thoughts going through your mind and you start thinking. So all week long, I was ill, upset, listening, trying to figure out why, what did we do wrong. Said a lot of things that was probably incorrect. But you know, now that, over the weekend, I've sat down and I've read a lot of stuff and looked at some models through over other counties and states, and I look where we are now, and I kind of looked at some other things that are going on. For some people, don't realize exactly what it costs to run a rescue squad or a business. And with everything that continues to go up, Medicare, you know, Medicare and medicine don't pay any extra when the fuel cost goes up. So I listened, I talked to all my staff over the weekend, I met with them, talked to them on the phone, and you know, heard what they need and everything. And you know, I think that this new modeled system may be a good way of moving forward. What we got to look at is not what's good for today, but what's good for your grandchildren or to move on forward in this county. And so that's just what I would like to leave it at that. Thank you very much for your time.
Next is Joni Blanton.
I'd like to thank all of you people, Commissioners, for your time and service. My name is Joni Blanton. I know most of you, some of you don't know me, but I've lived in Kings Mountain pretty much all my life. Worked for the postal service there in Kings Mountain. I sell real estate there in Kings Mountain. I've been on the rescue squad, joined in 1982 at Kings Mountain Rescue, and I retired in 2002. And I've served as a lifetime member and a board of director. I've also taught EMS classes through the college here for close to thirty years. I don't teach anymore, though. A little bit of history on Kings Mountain Rescue Squad. Was charged in 1958. Was Cleveland County lifesaving in rescue. But we do business as Kings Mountain Rescue. It was all volunteer. First rescue squad in the county, second rescue squad in the state. First ambulance was donated by Ollie Harris, Ollie Harris Funeral Home. And that same hearse was used to start three other squads in the county. First call was at Lake James in Newton for a drowning July the fifteenth, nineteen fifty-eight, probably before a lot of people in this room were born. We sent a total of twenty members, an ambulance, a panel truck, and a boat for a drowning. Our first home was 312 East Parker Street. We purchased land on Shelby Road in nineteen nineties. We provide numerous services to Kings Mountain and the surrounding areas. We stand by for school ball games, high school football games, and they cannot legally start till an ambulance is on site. We do standbys for the YMCA with their turkey runs, five Ks, Patriot Park events, and the Murphy's Toy Run that benefits a couple of organizations, but it also benefits the Cleveland County Sheriff's Department and the Kings Mountain Police Department. Most recent complete, month of February, Kings Mountain Rescue Squad transported one hundred and ninety-nine times with eighteen inter-facility transports. This does not include no transport or refusal calls that we were initially dispatched on. Two hundred and seventeen transports divided by the twenty-eight days in February comes out to thirteen transports a day. As Kings Mountain is the fastest growing area in Cleveland County, this will only increase. Also, to address one concern during our meeting last week with county manager, chairman of county commissioners, and CCMS director, our education and training is the same as Cleveland County EMS employees, as it is based on a state OEMS mandate and not a Cleveland County mandate. Cleveland County EMS was built on the backs of the rescue squads. All the squads are instrumental in the county going to ALS. Five members of each squad was in the first ALS class taught here in Cleveland County. I myself was in that class. The squads teach first aid, CPR classes for area businesses, churches, and civic organizations, and this is all for no cost to the citizens or taxpayers. After an October meeting with a couple of the commissioners and other county personnel, we received a vote of confidence and were told to continue with the services that we were working diligently to assure that Kings Mountain Rescue Squad was working towards goals that would improve and enhance service to the community. We have since ordered new uniforms, got those in, two new ambulances, and improved building, Wi-Fi, and Internet service to speed up submission of billing and patient reports, and all of this at no cost to the Cleveland County EMS or taxpayers. It is our opinion that our county commissioners have hastily made a decision that was presented to them from an uninformed representative and without regard to what is actually done by Kings Mountain Rescue and what we say. The county is responsible in patient care, financial costs such as insurance, equipment, building, and many other costs, as we were never given a question like some of the county firemen did to respond to public safety concerns or questions. We would gladly welcome meetings with each county commissioner individually or in groups of two as to not violate county rules and discuss many of the concerns that you may have before the process is set in motion to close the rescue squads. Because as we all know, once the squads are closed, you can never get them back, no matter if you realize, as we do, that this is or was a grave mistake. Thank you.
Next on the list is Debbie Morgan.
Good evening. I'm the president of the board directors for Upper Cleveland Rescue, and I was also chief of Upper Cleveland for eleven years. We were founded in 1963 to provide services for the upper end of Cleveland County. For the most part, these services were always free. We did not receive any financial support from the county, although we have asked for support similar to that offered to the fire departments. All that being said, we have operated totally as a self-sufficient entity with support of our community. The Upper Cleveland Rescue Squad has requested but has not received any formal justification from the county for taking over the current rescue squads, such as full cost savings analysis of this takeover or if there is any perceived subpar performance by various squads of the county manager or county commissioners. We cannot speak for the other squads, but neither the Upper Cleveland Rescue Chief nor board of directors were contacted or consulted concerning the implications of the decision prior to the commissioners' vote or prior to a broadcast email being sent to all county employees stating this was to occur. County employees knew about this before we were ever able to alert our employees that this was happening, so it was a shock to a lot of us. Will the upper end of the county have equivalent staff facilities based on our landmass? And what is the cost of the additional EMTs, equipment, and facilities? And based on our own experience in trying to locate fully equipped ambulances, where will the county be acquiring the units required for the increased new coverage area? And was a full cost analysis of this new operation presented to the commissioners prior to their voting to take over the rescue squads? If so, where was this information posted online? Will the county commissioners and county manager provide guaranteed assurances to the citizens of Cleveland County that there will be absolutely no increase in taxes to pay for these new employees, this new equipment, and these new facilities? In the event that the county is successful in their takeover to the operations to three existing rescue squads, will the county assume all current debt and liability for the squads that no tax increase to the citizens to cover these expenses? And who is the unnamed third party that did the EMS fire and law enforcement studies? And what does the third party consultant have, do they have ties to Cleveland County or the county commissioners? Upper Cleveland, this past year, we operated in the black. I know there's been a lot of ongoing, on this city government, the county government page on Facebook, there's been a lot of ongoing arguments back and forth about whether we got taxes or whether we didn't. We get no county taxes. We get no support from the county. Everything we have, we bought, we paid for with our blood, sweat, and tears. We raised the money. We started charging about five years ago. We charge insurance companies, Medicare, Medicaid, and the patient. So we are a fully self-sufficient business, because that's what we are, we're a business. And like Joni said, Kings Mountain was the first squad in the county, Shelby was the second, and we were the third. And the EMS system in this county was born off the backs of these rescue squads. Almost every employee that the counties had came through these rescue squads. And we really feel wrong that you did not consult with us, see if there was any way that something could be worked out to make it better instead of just saying you're no longer wanted, because that's the way we feel, that you no longer want us. So, thank you for your time.
Next item on the agenda is the consent item, Mr. Deputy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bear with me, as I worked through a very lengthy consent agenda for consideration this evening. We'll begin with item A, several sets of minutes for the commissioners to review from December the seventh, December the twentieth of 2021, January the eighteenth and twentieth, and February the first of 2022. All those minutes are in your packet for review. Item B is from the finance department, your monthly managers' report. This includes all of your internal lateral budget transfers as well as some general highlights. I would remind the board that we are now in full swing of the operational capital budget process. Also, a mid-year revenue expense analytic is included. Revenues continuing to demonstrate strong performance at about a two-and-a-half percent increase from the same time last year. The expenditure side of the budget is fairly flat with about two-tenths foot, one percent decrease. Item C and D are both from tax administration. Item C is your January, contains both your January and February collection report. January 2022 collection rate ninety-four point three-six percent. In February, the collection percentage is ninety-six point three-four percent, so still trending in a very strong pattern. Item D, the abatements and supplements report for January and February. January abatements, one hundred twenty-seven thousand, four hundred fifty-two dollars and seventy-six cents. Supplements totaled one hundred fourteen thousand, one hundred eighteen dollars and sixty-seven cents. Abatements for February, one thousand, one hundred sixty-three dollars and twenty cents, and supplements totaled four hundred sixty thousand, eight hundred ninety-four dollars and eighty-three cents. There is one pending refund or release for clerical error. We would, seeking commissioner to do a refund to the La Master family, which is an LLC, seven hundred thirty-six dollars and twenty-three cents. Item E is budget amendment number thirty-six on the year. At your last meeting, the board approved the financing for the DSS Health Department co-location, three point five million dollars, and we are now needing to amend the original budget ordinance to start that project. Item F, budget amendment number thirty-seven, request a budget one hundred and twenty thousand to continue to cover our tax, excuse me, tax management associates, who is our personal property audit firm. And obviously, those are new revenues from the discoveries that that firm has made. Item G is budget amendment number thirty-eight from the sheriff's office, request a budget four hundred and fifty thousand and an allocation from state budget, and that will be used to purchase the mobile command unit that I know that our commissioners are aware of. Item H, budget amendment number thirty-nine, also from the sheriff's office. This is another state grant from the North Carolina Department of Public Safety, eighty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars. And this request is to budget capital for the purchase of two patrol cars. Item I, from our emergency management department, budget amendment number forty, request a budget forty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars in emergency preparedness grant funds. This is reoccurring annually from Duke Energy. Item J, from the public health department, budget amendment- Item J, from the Public Health Department, Budget Amendment Number 41, budget request to budget $163,604 received from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. This is additional ARPA funds to be used in conjunction with our school health program to help cover existing expenditures and contracted services. Item K, also from the Health Department, Budget Amendment Number 42, request a budget of an additional $12,323 in federal WIC dollars, WIC programming, which is all flow through the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, but it is federal money, and will be used to buy supplies for that function. Item L, Budget Amendment Number 43, this is not new money. This is moving to create available budget flexibility in our Employee Wellness Fund, specifically in the pharmacy function, so we're asking to reallocate $621,000 from Employee Health Claims to our pharmacy so that we can continue to operate that wellness component. Item M, Budget Amendment Number 44, this is to begin the project ordinance for our new justice center. The request is to budget an original $1 million as we begin the preliminary engineering, design, and architectural component of that project. As we presented to the board at your Capitol Work Session, this one, first $1 million is out of the $18 million that's budgeted as paid as you go. Item N, from the Finance Department, Budget Amendment Number 45, this is request to budget $144,800 in professional services. And again, starting a project ordinance, and this would be for the schematic earth-moving design at the Duran Mill property with the Dravenall is under contract for that construction and design. Item O is from the Planning Department. This is request to set a public hearing for April the 5th. It would be rezoning case 22-07, and the property is located at 1205 Costner Road. And the request is to rezone from rural ag to light industrial with a conditional use. That will be set to go to the Planning Board and then come back to the Board of Commissioners at your April 5 meeting. Item P, also from the Planning Department, again, another public hearing for April 5th. This will be case 2208, a request for a text amendment to the county's UDO, specifically Section 12, 142, subsection 14. And it has to do with required minimum number of parking spots based on square footage. Again, that will be set to go to the Planning Board and then come back to this board with a recommendation on your April 5 meeting. Item Q, also from the Planning Department, case number 2209, again, a request to set a public hearing for April 5th. This would be for 22 parcels out on, it's a total of about 121.6 acres out on Stony Point Road. We have received 21 signatures of the 22 parcels. Again, requesting set a public hearing. We'll go to the Planning Board and come back with a recommendation to this board April 5th. Item R is from our Legal Department. Staff is asking for the board to approve the opening of our upset bid process. We've received an initial offer of $3,500 on a piece of property out on Anola Drive in Waco. The parcel number is 40159. The county inherited that property in 2017, and we have about $2,500 invested in it at this point. The initial offer exceeds that. Statutorily, we have to, as customary, go through the upset bid process, so we'll do the advertising and bring that back once that process is concluded. Item S is from Animal Services. At your work session in September and at your 2022 work session in last month, there were some technical changes made to the ordinance. This would be that final language specific to all the components that were listed in those work sessions. And finally, for consideration, item T, which is a resolution of support for Cleveland County Water as they continue to develop the Greenway and Longdale. They've applied for NC DOT funding, which requires a resolution of support from the county commissioners, and that is in your packet for review and consideration. That concludes a very lengthy consent agenda. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, you represented the consent agenda. Do you have any discussion or questions for Brian? If there's no questions or discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Subdued.
One second.
If there's no other discussion, all those in favor will say aye. Those opposed will say no. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is several public hearings. Madam Court.
After the public hearing has been opened, persons wishing to speak for or against the proposition will be asked to come forward and first state his or her name and address. All comments from the public are to be directed to the board. There are no comments directed at other members of the audience. If a speaker has a question, that question is to be directed to the chair. No one will be allowed to speak at the hearing more than once unless the chair recognizes a speaker a second time for rebuttal of information brought forth after the speaker has spoken. The original presentation by a speaker will be limited to no more than five minutes. Rebuttal presentation will be limited to no more than three minutes.
All right, this time, recognize Chris Martin is going to come forward and present case 22-02 as a text amendment to Section 12-157 of the Manufacturer Home Parks of Cleveland County Unified Development Ordinance. Chris?
Thanks for having me tonight. I've got several code amendments for your review tonight. The first is, first for your consideration is coming from the Planning Department, and the request is to make some amendments to the Manufacturer Home Park ordinance. This is coming from the Planning Department as, from direction from the Board of Commissioners from your September work session. At that work session, we presented with you, or to you, a number of codes, land development codes, including Manufacturer Home Parks. And you asked us to review several of these codes and review them for land use plan consistency, public safety, and compatibility for the properties around them. We've done that with the Manufacturer Home Park ordinance, and we have several suggestions. The first is lot size. We're suggesting to increase the minimum lot size to have a Manufacturer Home Park from one acre to five acres. That proposal would, if approved, would be consistent with our land use plan, our recently adopted plan that involved a lot of public meetings, and that was a vision, that was a vision that the plan identified that our citizens, our board, wanted for the county to develop some lot size and density requirements for these types of developments. The next would be density. It addresses density. It reduces the density from basically three manufactured homes per acre to two manufactured homes per acre, and then you can have up to three if you have both public water and public sewer. The third is landscape screening. Our current ordinance requires no screening, so there's no buffering between the park and the neighboring properties. So we're proposing to add that screening to satisfy the compatibility component of your direction. The next two are public safety, addresses public safety. The first to require that the roads meet fire code, and the intent of that is so that the road design would allow emergency vehicles to access the park and access each site within the park. So there would be some width requirements and some design requirements for those roads. And then the last is to name the roads. That would allow for better communication when making 911 calls. We've presented this proposal to the Planning Board. They recommend approval. They had one additional recommendation. They recommend to require a 50-foot paved section to the entrance of each park. Their thought is that would be, it would make a better appearance aesthetically, and that it would also address some public safety by keeping gravel from the roads within the park, keeping it from accessing the public road, the NC DOT road. Tonight, so that's the proposal. Your options tonight would be to approve the ordinance as drafted with the Planning Board's recommendation, to deny it, or approve it with any modifications that you see fit. And I can answer any questions.
All right, Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments for Chris?
Chief of May. You put screenage, Joe, there's certain types of screenage. You just said screenage, because we ran into it before and said, "Screenage, somebody's planting a little tree."
Yeah.
What the screenage regulation in that part?
So the type that's being proposed is, in our code, is described as type B, and it's our middle, our middle, we have a type A, B, and C. A is the most strict, and it requires evergreens at six feet tall planting height. B is the middle, which is the one being proposed for the parks. It does, it requires a planting that will grow to at least three feet tall and provide an opaque screen that you can't see through, and then also some sort of tall tree every 20 to, planted every 20 to 30 feet to kind of break up that buffering between properties. So I think, if you think of, you know, the A, I think the intent of A is to block the view. The intent of B is to, not necessarily to block, but to provide a transition from properties and a buffering. And then the most lenient type is C, and it's even more lenient than B. It's no opaque portion, just a tree every 20 to 30 feet.
Any other questions?
Well, you said the streets would be named?
Yes, that would be a requirement.
Would the mobile homes be numbered?
They would. By naming them, that would allow staff to number each individual home so that if a 911 call is needed to be made, the occupant of that home could give them a specific address instead of Lot 42. So that would be, we think that would be a benefit to the responders.
Just to comment on the paving part, I think that would be an asset to the developer because with all the heavy equipment of, especially fire trucks and EMS trucks and any truck over a one ton, once they, when they make that turn in there with that gravel, they're going to push the gravel around. So I think something like that would probably benefit the developer.
I think you presented us a very good plan, and I'd like to make the motion to approve.
We have to do the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have to have a public hearing. Sorry.
I got a minute.
Any other questions? All right, if not, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. So anyone wishing to speak for or against the planning development case 22-02 text amendment to Section 12-157 of the Manufacturer Home Parks of Cleveland County Unified Development Ordinance, please come forward and state your name and address. Anyone wishing to speak for or against Planning Department case 22-02 text amendment to Section 12-157 Manufacturer Home Parks of the Cleveland County Unified Development Ordinance, please come forward and state your name and address. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any other questions or discussion from the Commissioners? If not, now the entertaining. If your motion is to approve as presented?
Yes.
Circle.
All right, if there's no other discussion, all those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed will say no. Motion carries. Mr. Martin will come forward and present planning case 22-03 text amendment to Section 12-161 Recreational Vehicle Parks of Cleveland County Unified Development Ordinance.
Thank you. Again, this would be an amendment to our text for recreational vehicle parks. And this amendment request is coming from staff at the direction of the board from your September work session. You asked us to review the RV park ordinance and evaluate it for land use plan consistency, consistency with the current code, public safety and compatibility, compatibility with the neighboring properties. What we've proposed is to eliminate the one-mile separation requirement. That is, that would satisfy the consistency of code. If you recall, last year, you amended the zoning districts that these are allowed in to only two zoning districts. When we adopted the one-mile separation requirement, they were allowed in all zoning districts. So we, staff does not feel like the one-mile separation or the original ten is not there any longer. The second is to reduce the limitation of that three acre, three per acre, three units per acre in a watershed to only the critical areas. And that is also directed to be consistent with the current code. Last year, we adopted a new watershed ordinance that reduced the minimum lot size from one acre to half acre. So this ordinance with RV parks would just bring the RV park ordinance consistent, make it more consistent with that watershed ordinance. It actually would allow more density with the RV parks. Third is to require a dumpster or waste disposal, disposal system on-site. And then the last two are both public safety related. Also with RV parks is to require the roads to meet the fire code so that emergency services can get in and out within the sites and get to each site safely, and then to eliminate the 1,000-foot requirement or maximum requirement for each street. Because with the adoption of a fire code ordinance for the streets, you would no longer need to regulate how long each street is within the park. We presented this ordinance, or these amendments to the Planning Board, and they recommended approval after a lot of discussion. And tonight, the options for the board after having a public hearing is to approve, deny, or approve with any modifications that you see fit. And I can answer any questions.
Commissioners, you've heard the presentation, so are there any comments or questions for Chris?
Should we name these roads as well?
It's a good question, and I can answer, you know, we've given that some thought. Addresses are typically assigned to structures that have a permanent use. RVs are not built to a code that allows a permanent use. So staff felt that by assigning individual addresses, that you may be encouraging that use, or that RV to be used as a home. So staff felt that maybe that part and the addressing wouldn't be needed in this ordinance.
But if there was an emergency, it would help to know where you're going.
Yeah.
Or even deliveries.
Maybe a street name, but not a number.
You know, the name, the street names could be an option. I certainly think that would, I agree with you.
I guess part of it would depend on how large, like if it's a small RV park, then they just know if you get in a park, you're going to find who you're looking for pretty quick. If it gets to be a larger one, then that could be a problem.
We, and we actually have a couple RV park owners who've chosen to name their streets within the park. So that could be an option.
Yeah, I think that's a good question because we've had a couple RV fires in the parks in the last short period of time, and I think that one of the RV parks, they had trouble finding their location. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
So I think that's something that we really should consider, having the road name, designated number, and I see the firemen's out there shaking their head and probably EMS people also. So maybe this is a good thing that we may want to consider in doing so.
But you're not really, the RV can move, but that spot can have a number.
Yeah, but that spot, yeah. And I think most of the RV parks I've been through, always you got a number, a campsite or whatever. So I think that might be something good that we would really consider.
If the board wishes and wants to approve, they could modify the draft and include that in the motion.
Are there any other questions at this point? All right, if not, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against our Planning Department case 22-03 text amendment to Section 12-161 Recreational Vehicle Parks of Cleveland County Unified Development Ordinance, please come forward and state your name and address. Anyone wishing to speak for or against Planning Department case 22-03, or 03 text amendment to Section 12-161 Recreational Vehicles of Cleveland County Unified Development Ordinance, please come forward and state your name and address. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And now, Commissioners, you can continue with questions or discussions. Make any modifications if you like.
I'll make the motion that we accept it. I'll make the motion that we accept it with a modification if the streets are named.
And lots.
And lots numbered.
I'll take that.
Any other questions or discussion? Chris, you understand the direction?
I do.
All right. Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no. Motion carries with the modifications. So Chris, you're up again, planning department case 22-06 request, request to rezone 513 Borders Road from restricted residential to restricted manufactured home parks.
All right, so my last case is a request from a property owner, and he's asking to rezone two acres that he owns along Borders Road between Moss Lake and the Cleveland Mall portion of Borders Road, but closer to, closer to the Oak Grove Road intersection. Advocate is Dustin Smith. He's submitted an application that has signature support from some of the, from some of the adjoining property owners. He's asking to rezone the property from restricted residential to manufactured home parks and residential and manufactured homes district. It's a long, that's a long name for that district. The surrounding zoning, and we have it on the overhead, you can see is restricted residential and requested district. The yellow represents the restricted while the orange represents the requested district. The surrounding uses are mostly single-family dwelling, and then there is a manufactured home park across the road from his property. Mr. Smith owns the two acres, plus he owns the 20 acres that surrounds that two-acre parcel. Both of these, both the requested district and the current district are consistent with the land use plan. And we've presented this application to the planning board, and they have voted unanimously to approve. And this one would also require a public hearing, and I can answer any questions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments for Chris at this time?
It appears there's more mobile homes in the area than there are houses.
There's, there's definitely a mixture.
Any other questions or comments? All right, if not, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the planning department case 22-06 request to rezone 513 Borders Road from restricted residential to residential manufactured home parks, please come forward and state your name and address. Anyone, anyone wishing to speak for or against the planning department case 22-06 request to rezone 513 Borders Road from restricted residential to residential manufactured home parks, please come forward and state your name and address. All right, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, discussions?
I agree with Doug that the, seems to be as many mobile homes in that area, looking at the overview, and since we didn't have any opposition at the planning board or here tonight, I make a motion that we, that we accept the planning department's request to rezone.
Second.
Motion second, is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no. Motion carries. Now we're down to the regular agenda. Item number eight, sale of county-owned property, Elliot.
Look at that. Thank you, Board, for having me here. Tonight, we're looking at the potential sale of two county-owned properties. These are properties that have already gone through the upset bid process and are now coming back to the board for approval or disapproval of the offers received through that process. So, and they're, these are at 202 Blazer Street and on Country Club Road in Shelby. So, 202 Blazer Street property, this is parcel number 51976, up, I think it's like north of the mall area. And this was acquired by gift in 1998 from the United States Marshals. The tax value on the property is $4,725. We have an offer from Mr. Sklavunakis, and I apologize if I said that incorrectly. I, I, sorry. And so, right, so our, the tax value that we have on record is $4,725. There is a bid of $2,500. Now, the county did, received this property as gift with US Marshals, and at the moment, is the county's job to maintain the property, so it is a liability. That being said, the offer is below tax value. And, yes, so this is the 202 Blazer Street property. And then, the Country Club Road property, parcel 26693, this one's an interesting, a little, kind of interesting. So, I don't know if you can see on the map, there's, so this is on Country Club Road, and you make a write-off Marion going towards, out of town. And there's houses on both sides, and then there's nothing on this parcel. And so, you could probably guess who we have an offer from. It is the owner right here. And that owner is Benjamin Leslie. This is a property that was acquired by tax foreclosure. When we acquire a property by tax foreclosure, it means we go through the tax foreclosure process, and nobody else takes the property, so the county ends up with it. The tax value of this property is $35,595. And Benjamin Leslie has made an offer of $17,000 for the property. That leaves the county with a gain of $1,355. But again, it's also another property off the books, so the county doesn't have to go and maintain. I would expect, if the board were to approve this offer, we'd probably get a request of mapping in short order to repartial his property. And, so the, the board actions would be, so these have both, again, been through the process, where these have been published, we've said, please send us your offers. These are the two best offers the county received. And at this time, the board would either approve or deny the offers on each property. If the board were going to do the same thing for both properties, it could be one action. If the board were going to do something different for each property, that would require two actions. And, thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Elliot? If there are no questions, what's the pleasure on these two items?
I make the motion to approve.
Both as presented?
Both, both as presented.
I'll, I'll say.
Any other discussion or question by the Commissioners?
We won't have to go out and cut the grass, and we'll start getting a little bit of tax back off them.
Anything else? All right, if not, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no. Motion carries. All right.
Thank you, Board.
Next one is residential solid waste collection, Mr. Epley.
Mr. Gordon, thank you. Something that staff's been working on now, following, really a process that began in February of 21th, Commissioners' work session last year, where there's a, a, a deep interest amongst our board members to evaluate this, this concept of a single exclusive franchise for both commercial and solid waste in Cleveland County. Obviously, we've worked through a tremendous amount of, of data forecasting and, and options for the board to consider. Ultimately, what was chosen last year was the beginning in July of 2021, we piloted an open-market commercial system with a vendor registration system, and then remained exclusive on the curb side. So far, and, and the goal was to collect information and be prepared to report back to the board on how that process was working, which we did last month at your work session in February of 2022. That, on the commercial side, we've seen adjustments in the market for price, with competition driving that market price down. We were measuring it over that 12-month period for a front load, eight-yard front-load container with weekly pickup. We had 16 vendors that are now operating in that commercial market, where historically, we had had only one. And, and so, you know, the feedback was, really, we hadn't seen an uptick in any of the things we were measuring, litter, tonnage, material integrity of any of those deals. And we had seen a correction in the, the market price. And so, the conversation began, what's the next step for the residential side? And several options were presented, with, with the stated goals being, how do we main, how do we create competitiveness and ensure the best price point for citizens without losing some of the advantages that come with a franchise, such as 100% county coverage? Meaning that if it's important to our Commissioners that, no matter where you live in Cleveland County, you're able to receive curbside residential solid waste collection on a weekly basis at an affordable price. At your work session, you asked staff to proceed with development of options, but, but to do it in a competitive way through an RFP process, which is request for proposals. And so, I have two things for consideration tonight before we release that RFP, which is drafted and prepared to go, assuming that our, our, our board is comfortable with the modeling. And you asked us to develop two specific models. One, which would be the county in phases, so that, you know, we could have multiple vendors, or vendors could choose specific areas of the county, or they could adjust the price point based on specific areas of the county, or if vendors wanted to bid on the entire entirety of the county. But, but, both models under, under a competitive process, but ultimately leading towards a franchise. And so, what I want to present to you is some, some information about our current curb-side non-incorporated households, and then ultimately demonstrate to the board the zones that we came up with, and talk about next steps. So one of the first things that I think is worth pointing out is that of the 25,000 or so unincorporated households in Cleveland County, about 3,294 of those folks are receiving this, this, this service currently through Republic. I would remind the board that your ordinance and your franchise right now allows you to control that price point. The Republic is not, is unable to change what they're charging their customers without Commissioner approval. And you can see the vast majority of their customers are within 10 miles of the landfill. So when we started asking and evaluating the county and how zones may be created to consider multiple franchises or, or other bidding options, we, we started with the census tracts. There's 22 in Cleveland County. I've highlighted the ones in red, which are currently in a municipal district, which would not be considered. And there's, there's one that's partially in a municipal boundary. The reason we started with census tracts is off the heels of the 2020 census, we know a tremendous amount of information about the folks inside of these census tracts. We know their income level, their educational attainment, the number of people in the household, all of those things, which ultimately helped guide us toward a more equitable zone development. So when we look at the county, and we modeled several things, that we, that we zoned off based on geographic mileage or population density or, or average income, we modeled several different ideas, again, trying to come up with equitable zones. But the, the area that we landed was evaluating these current sheriff patrol zones, where the county's already segmented out. And we thought that we could most easily take sheriff's current zones one and two and make zone one for this proposed curbside zone. And so forth, three and four, five, six, seven, and eight. And you can see, this would become one and two. Zone two here would be three and four, four and five, and five and six. And you can overlay that over these census tracts, and begin to develop some data about who it is that you're talking to, such as how many, if I were, if I were a vendor that were, that was interested in bidding on all or of, or some of these zones, how many current customers do I have? What does the market share look like? So currently, for zone one, there's 648 customers. Zone two would be 1,069, 769 for zone three, and 808 current customers for zone four. So again, it kind of gives these vendors an idea of, you know, what, what percentage of the market they would be capturing on the way in. We're also able to evaluate, based on their address, how close they are, assuming that proximity to the landfill is some way relatable to profitability and cost, especially with fuel prices being as, as they are. And you can see zones one and two clearly have the highest percentage of customer base in that closer proximity to the landfill. We're able to gauge their age. As we demonstrated to the board back in, at your work session, the vast majority of these current Republic customers are between 45 and 59 years old. That's more replicative of zones one, two, and three, which would be kind of a predictive analytic of who's going to be signing up for this. Typically, those folks have more expendable income and are positioned in their life to, to, to like that type of service. We know that zone four is a little bit of a younger demographic. That's probably impacted because of Gardner-Webb. So not only is zone four the furthest away, it also has the least likely customer base to sign on. We looked at number of households, and again, I think fairly equitable across all four zones, median income and mean income. Again, probably predictors of, of folks who are going to take this, you know, a little bit more expensive option than using the county's provided collection sites. And ultimately, I think all of that put together, when you look at the, you know, the, the, the lack of density in some of these unincorporated areas across Cleveland County, if we were to, you know, develop zones that were equitable, I think this, this is the, this is the proposed zones that we came up with. If the Commissioners are comfortable with that development process, we have drafted an RFP that's prepared for distribution as early as tomorrow. I would say that last Wednesday, we, we went through, two weeks ago, directly following your work session, all of the 16 vendors that currently are hauling commercial. We called all 16 vendors and, and, and talked with them about the Commissioner's desire to have a competitive process and ask of their interest in hauling residential solid waste, curbside. Five vendors indicated that they were interested. All five of those were invited to a meeting last Wednesday in this, in this room. A portion of those came, we presented a very similar PowerPoint. Clearly, it hadn't been approved by our board yet, but we were saying, you know, if this was the development process, we, we kind of wanted to get some feedback and provide them all the information that we could. We shared a very similar timeline. Again, with preparation of distribution of an RFP tomorrow. Two options, a vendor could choose to bid on the entire county. A vendor could choose to bid on a zone, multiple zones. And, 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 you know, then we would give them approximately six weeks to, to do whatever data mining they needed to do, ask questions of our team, put together their proposal back by May 1, present it to this board at your May 3 meeting. With whatever those proposals come back, hopefully, we would be able to mobilize by the expiration of the current franchise, which is June 30. But obviously, for, if it were a new vendor, they may need more time to mobilize. So in the RFP, there's not a requirement to be mobilized by July 1. But if they can't by then, they have to tell us by when they could. There's, in the RFP, there's minimum insurance requirements, there's a performance bond. It, it, it requires them to list additional charges. So for example, if they have to take out an additional container or do an additional pickup, what that would cost. And we'll collect all of that and be prepared to present it to this board, again, May 3, for you to make, to make a decision on how you want to move forward. So again, I guess what I'm, what I'm seeking direction and guidance on is, are we comfortable with development of the proposed zones and permission to release this RFP tomorrow?
Commissioners, what questions do you have for Brian?
What happens if we bid out the zones and you don't have people bidding in some of the other zones? Then what you do, you drop back and punt again? You talk about you want a competitive bid. Even we put it out at the whole county, and we put out for bid, that's competitive. You know, competitive, someone wants it all. But I think in some of the vendors I've talked to that done the, I guess, the other hauling, whatever, sure, that they want some of the zones, but they want the zones closest in to the landfill, so they make the best money. And I think you're going to have trouble getting them in the far end of the county. So we need to know what are we going to do if you put out a bid and you don't get it? And then the, maybe the one hauling now said, hey, okay, this burst, and then you're stuck with not getting the whole county covered. You're only giving part of the county the service.
So, Republic, who's had the franchise for some time now, was one of the vendors who came to our meeting last week. And had we, had we not pursued this model, they were prepared to, to entertain a potential new contract. So I think whatever information we get back through the RFP process, if the entire county's not covered, I think the board would just have to make a policy, policy decision of whether that is important to you or not. From a staff perspective, we're giving bidders two options. Companies that may want to cover the whole county for a fixed rate, or companies that may want to do a portion. And maybe there's three vendors that, that culminate to an entire coverage area. But hard to speculate on that. I think that'll ultimately be a policy decision that this board has to make, once the data comes back. comes back.
But have you considered what you would do if you don't get the whole county covered?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's what you have. If there's not, if no one bids on the entire county, and...
Part of it's left out, then we're going to go back to what we got, are we going to say, okay, those guys are just out, or whatever?
I think that's a decision this board would have to make.
But you hadn't considered it.
Well, we have. We had an option at your work session that was a five-year extension of the current franchise for $27 a month with Republic, and the board chose to take this option.
Not all.
Well, we're not voting on which option we're going to take, which zones, or whether it's going to be one for the whole county.
We don't have that information.
We'll make that decision once we get the RFQs.
Yes, sir, that's right.
You're going to put both or...
Yes, sir.
Or pick it out?
Yes, sir.
Do them both?
Yes, sir.
Okay, my mistake, I understood you were just going to do the zoning.
No, no. Option A would be for someone like Republic, who may say, I want to do the whole county. Option B would be for maybe a company that says, I want to do zone one and zone two, but maybe another company says zone three and zone four, and under that situation, the board may issue two franchises versus one exclusive franchise. So again, the direction that I'm hoping to hear is, do the zones seem equitable and fair, and are we comfortable with issuance of an RFP under these options and timelines?
So are you looking for a motion?
Or direction, whatever's to the board's leisure. I just, before I move forward, I want to make sure that we're all on the same page.
I think it's a great plan, and I'm very interested in seeing how it comes back, and it may be, maybe two of them say, well, the whole county, and then we'll be able to see which one we think can do the best, and then maybe we'll be lucky, and one will take two, and another will take two, and it'll be a better price, but we won't know until we put it out there.
Right, yes, sir.
Yeah, and I think the time schedule you're saying is pushing us really tight. I mean, if I were a new company coming in and had to bid on it, May the 1st, and then be ready to go by June the 30th, that's a real tight timeline.
Well, there's a...
To buy equipment, and especially if it's a new person.
Sure. I think that's why there's a place in the RFP that if you can't mobilize, because you also have to buy 3,596 gallon curbside containers unless you have them. So there's a place where they could communicate through the RFP process when mobilization would be possible, so if the board wanted to go with someone who couldn't provide that supply by July the 1st, we would know a date by which they could. And that may create a gap in service, if there's a switch in vendors, but really no way to avoid that.
Well, I didn't make, do we need a motion? You just asked for direction, I think it's...
We need a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the staff's recommendation, and we go with this, and see how it comes out.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, a second to accept the recommendation from staff. Is there any other discussion or questions? All right, here, not all, those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no. All right, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is number 10, COVID-19 update and rescension of state of emergency resolution, resolution to rescind the state of emergency. I'll get it right in a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and fellow board members, for having me tonight, as well as Mr. Davis to follow. I know I've shared many times this update, and hopefully this will kind of bring us full circle and a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel. So you all have seen this table and graphic several times, this is from the NCDHHS COVID dashboard, and as you can see, we've experienced a lot of different things over the trajectory of this pandemic, but I'll draw your attention to kind of that red line there. That first little hump is that Delta variant that we experienced in the fall, and if you remember, we had a pretty substantial impact in hospitalizations, our severe illness was at an all-time high. And then that second extremely tall increase there is our Omicron variant, which had a very high level of transmissibility, so lots of people got it, but our severe illness rates were much, much lower than they were with Delta. So we're averaging around three cases a day, which is almost unbelievable. Our percent positivity is 3.9%, and we really see a substantial decline in the number of cases over the last few weeks. This illustration really just continues to show that trend. These are the number of tests that are being conducted in the county throughout the duration of the pandemic, and so you can see those blue bars as they kind of grow and fluctuate, and then that black line is actually percent positivity for Cleveland County. And so really, I'll draw your attention to the right side there, when we saw that peak of Omicron, our percent positivity was over 40%, and then as you can see, with that week closing out, the second week in February for this data, bless you, it was nearly about 7% last time this data was collected. And so we were averaging just under 1,000 tests conducted a week, which is a substantial decrease from the nearly 5,000 that we were experiencing earlier this year. And as I mentioned earlier, one of the things that we've learned as we've transitioned throughout the pandemic is really how impactful our hospital systems become, depending on kind of our response and what is out there. And so the CDC has actually released a new kind of tracker, this is called community levels, and this really tells us where kind of precautions should be in place at the local level based on hospitalizations. And so new COVID admissions, and then the percent of inpatient beds that are occupied by COVID patients. And so on the left there, you'll see Cleveland County specifically, and so for our community, it's very low, really, it's, you know, up to date on vaccines as a recommendation, as well as testing for symptomatic individuals. And then there is the whole map of the country, and North Carolina is almost entirely in that light green color, which is low transmission. As I mentioned, as our numbers have decreased, we've also seen some flexibility and adaptability as we've learned more about it from CDC. And so late December, early January, we saw the CDC shift our guidance around isolation and quarantines, really going to this five-day of isolation or quarantine, and five days of mask wearing. And then also earlier in February, we saw NCDHHS no longer recommending contact tracing for our K-12 students, as well as no longer requiring staff and students to stay home unless they were positive or symptomatic. And similar flexibilities have been deployed for childcare facilities as well. And lastly, this slide is really just a timeline of where we've been and what we've kind of endured over the last two years. And so January of 2020, we had our first U.S. recorded case. In March, we have federal emergency declarations, our first case here in Cleveland County, Governor Cooper issued our stay-at-home orders. Fast forward to the December of that year, we were doing our vaccine rollout here in the county. May of '21, we lift the indoor mask mandate as far as at the state level, we get rid of the mask gathering limitations and social distancing, and so we see kind of some of these flexibilities coming into play. July of '21, we see kind of this real shift in in-person education focus. September, we saw that Delta surge in hospitalizations, and now kind of here we are with this updated change in guidance, more relaxation around what that's going to look like, and really this move to a more endemic state of COVID. And so recognizing that it's with us, and we need to kind of mold some of our policy and the way that we're implementing that around some of those surveillance methods. And so, as I mentioned, the change in school guidance, general public guidance, as well as just recognizing, we have now a lot of methods deployed that we didn't have in 2020. We have availability of vaccine, we have very much availability of testing with at-home tests available, as well as many providers, I think all of ours actually in the county test to some degree. And then I think also the public really has a lot of awareness for if they're at highest risk, knowing what precautions are in place for them in order to prevent further illness. And with that, I guess I'll transition to Mr. Davis.
So anybody have any questions for Tiffany before we switch?
No, I'd just like to thank you for all the hard work, dedication, last two years. You were a new employee, and then you got thrown COVID, and that you and the whole county weathered through it, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you, we appreciate it, and have appreciated all of your support, absolutely.
And I'm sure you agree, it's nice to be able to look around this room tonight and see all the smiles.
Absolutely, absolutely. It has been a challenging transition to see everyone's faces through the masks, so yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Tiffany.
Thank you.
So next, we have Perry Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. I'm excited to be here before we tonight, we've been looking for this day for a little over two years now. Talk about the state of emergency, I went the wrong way. The state of emergency originally for Cleveland County was activated for the pandemic, March 17th of 2020. What you heard from the director earlier is very encouraging news, a lot of positive information there. We have a significant decrease in COVID positive cases, there's a need for major pandemic-related purchases that no longer exist, the CDC guidance restriction dramatically reduces, the director talked about, and the current governor's executive order number 256 is set to expire May the 5th. There is a move in the legislature in the state, the speaker can speak to that, in regards to removing the current state of emergency for the state of North Carolina. The United States Senate passed a resolution just recently, voted 48 to 47 to end the state of emergency for the United States. There's currently 69 counties in the state with a state of emergency still in effect in Cleveland, Cleveland County is one of those 69. There are 31 counties in North Carolina that have rescinded their states of emergency. We recommend, on behalf of our office director, to rescind the state of emergency for Cleveland County effective immediately tonight. Your actions are to leave the state of emergency in effect as it's activated now, or to adopt the resolution to rescind the state of emergency.
Thank you, Perry. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Perry?
No, but I would love to make the motion to rescind the state of emergency.
I'll second.
Motion second to rescind the state of emergency. Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no. All right, motion carries, thank you, guys.
Perry, effective 7:22.
Say again?
It's your, it's effective 7:22 PM.
Next, we're down to board appointments. This section of the agenda was amended, so Commissioner Hutchins?
Okay, I present serve on the board trustees, the college, appointed by the commissioners themselves, and I would like to ask if I'm stepping down as a board trustee, but I would like to make a motion that Kevin Gordon will hold the rest of my term. I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Not all, those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no. Motion carries. Next, we're down to the Board of Equalization and Review. This time, I'm going to recognize our Madam Court to handle this next part.
Board, we're in the home stretch. The last item we have tonight for board appointments is the resolution that was approved back in February 1st of 2022, was a resolution to make a special board of equalization and review. So this resolution will authorize you by North Carolina general statute to appoint the special board. The qualifications are, each person will need to be a resident of Cleveland County, and the terms for this board at this time are going to be a one-year appointment. The Board of E and R will convene April 5th, so that's when they will have their first meeting, and whoever is appointed, Sherry Lavender in the Tax Assessor's Office will go over all the housekeeping, basic necessities, and things like that. To make this easier, we're going to do a roll call vote, just to be clear. I'm going to start with Commissioner Bridges, who, would you like to appoint somebody, or would you like yourself to serve?
I would like to appoint Mr. Andy Dedman, he's already approved, he has already said he would be glad to serve on this board.
Mr. Chair, would you like to do individual votes, or go down each one?
Let's just do them all at one time, I think.
Okay.
Oh, I'd like to appoint Gary Hastings, and he's already accepted.
Commissioner Hutchins?
I'd like to appoint David Allen, and I talked to him, and he's already accepted.
Madam Vice Chair?
I'd like to appoint Mike Feelback, and he has agreed.
Mr. Chair?
I'm going to appoint Marvin Hutchinson from Waco, and he has accepted.
Okay, so board, you've been presented the list of applicants. I'll need a motion.
So, motion to accept the five names that were submitted.
Make a motion to accept them.
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no.
Board, we will, if you want to let your people know that I will be in contact with them this week, as will Sherry Lavender, to get all their information, to make sure they get everything they need prior to the start of E and R convening for the year.
All right, down to the number 12, next item on the agenda of the closed session. Last chair.
I would like to make a motion to go into closed session for North Carolina general statute 143-318-11A, 3, A5, and A6, to consult with an attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege to consider personnel matter and to establish the terms of an employment contract.
We have a motion, we need a second.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no. All right, we're going to convene here and move into the conference.
Make the motion to return to open session.
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Alright, so we're back. So the board gave direction to its attorneys to take action on a personnel matter and establish the terms of an employment contract. So with that, I guess we're at the end of our agenda. So any of the commissioners, do you have anything you'd like to report?
Make the motion. Is there a movement or a comment? You can go on.
Phil, is there anything you've got to say, Tim? Alright, if not, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor say aye.